Good evening, everyone. I call to order the October 24th, 2022 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Roberts, would you please call the roll in one second? I need a motion, please, to have a Treasurer Pro Tem for the evening.
So moved.
And who's the nomination for?
Oh, for Lauren.
Oh, for a board member.
Oh, for me.
We have a nomination for Mr. Craig to serve as Treasurer Pro Tem this evening. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. There is a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll just call this swiftly. Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton? Vice President Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Okay. You are our Treasurer Pro Tem this evening. Mr. Craig, so now, Ms. Roberts, would you please call the roll this evening?
Absolutely. Ms. Bolton?
President.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett. Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Thank you very much. This is what happens when Jen goes out of town. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you might have. Thank you. We're going to turn now to the next item on our agenda. Do we have any updates this evening from our superintendent?
Okay, thank you, Board President. The only one that I would like to elevate at this time is the focus collectively on the goals and guardrails work that the Board is doing at this time. On Saturday, there is an event for students that will be hosted by Dr. Moffett and a Board Member Craig. And then on November 2nd, there is the Town Hall. So we are putting that information out on social media. We're doing calls to parents and families as well and notifying our staff. But I did want to say publicly, so that we have that for the record, that we are really making sure that we get the information out, so that there's feedback from the community on the goals and guardrails process.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. So we're going to move right along this evening and just very quickly touch on our three-month Board priorities. We decided in August, at the August 15th meeting, that there were five areas that were most important for the Board's attention over the next three months. They involved our work on governance training, a strategic planning process, transportation, the levy that is on the ballot in November, and strengthened the community relationships and relationships with parents. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for their efforts on all of those fronts. I think we are on track to being exactly where we want to be by the 8th of November, which is when those priorities expire. So we will have a summative update on those at our next Business Meeting, which will be on the 7th of November. The very last thing I want to share on those priorities before we go to Hearing of the Public is that we're also tracking how we spend our time. Again, want to thank Phyllis and Pat in the Board Office for their help with this, with the goal of spending most of our time, so more than half, on the things that we said mattered most over this time period. And our most updated number after our last meeting is 51.1%. So we are there fairly. So thank you, everybody, for your help and your help in the coming two meetings. With that, we'll move, unless Board members have anything to share or ask about our three-month priorities. We're going to be talking more about several of them this evening. Ms. Bolton?
Just a question, if I could, regarding the, I know we'll be talking about strategic planning a little bit later, but the next steps on governance. What's the date that's anticipated after our focus groups regarding the Board voting on the five guardrails and goals?
Mr. Craig, would you like to speak to that one?
So the anticipation or the anticipated goal would be that we would do it in December, I believe is the exact, the last, or the last meeting, was it December 5th, I think it is? The hope is that what we would have by the second week of November is all that feedback that we can put together, mesh together, think about what either is missing, what's not missing, what we can clarify, and then have some time to be able to digest that and go through it and have it ready by the December 5th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolton, any other questions or others?
Thank you for that. And then, and then that would kind of end the, at least the first phases, if you will, of the governance efforts in our strategic planning.
That's right. Yeah. So then we will move next into Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, if you're online, you'll be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a response to any of the questions you might have. This request is consistent with Board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, again, these are for folks online, you will briefly see the Welcome Screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful to all listeners. Thank you. Could a member of our team let us know how many speakers we have online this evening?
There are no speakers online this evening.
We have a very short hearing of the public. I believe we have one speaker in person, and so we will invite up CFT President Julie Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of and is invited to the rally that we are having along Madison Road. We are going to have a honk for CPS schools. It will be this Thursday, October 27th, from 3:00 to 4:30. And we would like to invite all of you to come out and join us and to also invite your other colleagues to join us. We are doing it this Thursday, and then we will be having another event after that. But if you could come, we will be from the corner of DeSales and Madison, which is area at Woodburn, all the way to Withrow. So I have an invitation for everyone. And then, secondly, I'm not sure why, but the Treasurer added the CFT Lead Teacher Stipends to the Superintendent's recommendations for this time for you to vote on our payroll's approval. That has never been done in the past, and I don't want people to have the belief that you all are paying for our parts of our salaries. It's always been kept separately, and we get invoiced for that. So I just want everybody, all Board members, to be aware, and I would like for anybody who's listening on the public, that our stipends are not paid for by CPS. And I think that it should be pooled, because you all don't vote for our stipends. Our members vote for our contracts. So that's all. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Thank you very much.
Eve, do you have a question?
Yeah, and I think, President Sellers, if you have more you'd like to share, that's more than fine. And then we'll also have a chance to talk more about this when we vote on the Treasurer's report, which I expect would be probably in about 25, 30 minutes.
It's not in the Treasurer's report.
It's on the Superintendent's.
It's on the Superintendent's report.
Like I said, Superintendent's report, which will be in 19 or 24 minutes. Anything else you want to share about that, President Sellers?
About, we have never, our payroll has never gone through, because our payroll is not something that you all vote on. Our Executive Committee votes on our payroll issues, and then we are invoiced by the district. It's been like that way for probably 50 years. And so all of a sudden now, there's been this change. Last year, it was here, and we pulled it at the last minute. And then this year, it was back in there again, because they said they can't pay us unless you vote for it. But you all don't vote on our payroll issues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sellers.
Thank you.
We'll create some time to talk with our administration about it during the Superintendent's recommendations. Okay, so we will move then, if there are no other speakers online who have joined us in the last minute or two, Hearing None. We will keep moving to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve our minutes from the Special Meeting, October 3rd, Business Meeting, October 3rd, Special Public Meeting, October 12th.
No moves.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We're going to move to Item F on the Committee Report. I think we have one report this evening from Committee Chair Morosky from the Policy and Equity Committee.
Thank you, President Lindy. Your policy committee comprised of Board Member Bolton, Dr. Moffett, and myself met on September 29th at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in Room 111. We began by talking about the MOU between the District and the Cincinnati Police Department. You all remember, after we voted to approve or to re-up and continue our relationship, I had asked that we pick up the MOU in policy, and we did, and we had a great discussion. It's a long discussion of the minutes, and I'm not going to go through the entire thing. But there are just a couple highlights that think that bear, you know, saying out loud for edification of the public and others. You'll recall that it was assigned by me, because I wanted to have discussions around parental notification of interaction with police officers, de-escalation measures being mandated for officers, and some element of civil rights training for students, i.e., you know, do they know that they have the right to not self-incriminate, et cetera? Miranda rights and the like. William Bell, our Director of Safety, came at the request of Dr. Moffett, and we were certainly glad he was there. He answered a ton of questions, and I'd like to give some real kudos to Mr. Bell for being with us. He is a retired police officer and had a lot of good insight that I know was helpful for me. The things I'd like to highlight is the MOU has not changed since 2019. He also updated us about Senate Bill 68 in Ohio Revised Code 3301.0721, which is a model curricula, college and career readiness, financial literacy, and proper interactions with peace officers. Now, this will be codified and be required to be taught in social studies courses all throughout the state. Ms. Bolton let us know at our last Policy Committee Meeting that a lot of the concerns I raised, i.e., I under, you know, I like the fact that part of the curricula, for example, is teaching kids how to interact with cops, but my problem, not just with this issue, but writ large, is that we don't talk enough, in my opinion, about how do cops interact with our kids, especially our black students that are disproportionately disciplined. Ms. Bolton let me know, and the committee know, at our last meeting, just last Friday, that a lot of these same issues were raised, and so they're sort of looking at this curriculum at the state level, so I think that's a good thing. But it's notable, again, Senate Bill 68 will mandate some sort of discussion in the classroom regarding interaction with what they call peace officers. Mr. Bell let us know that the SROs are being trained in de-escalation. I recommend it to be somehow drafted into the new MOU, though, regardless if they are, just so it's there. But again, we're not going to be updating this. The new one, this one, is till 23, '24 school year. So we're kind of looking to the future. And then to kind of speed through this, because it is pretty long in the minutes, excuse me. If the committee will continue to look at this MOU and get updated on it, particularly as we get to drafting a new one, we're not going to put it on the agenda every single month, but we will continue to revisit it as is necessary. So Policy 5200 attendance, attendance, we'll be voting on that tonight. Policy 5410, promotion, academic acceleration, and retention. This was a very interesting issue. We've had a lot of discussion. President Sellers and other members of CFT have attended our past few meetings, which has been extraordinarily helpful in getting this right. Attendance, as I think we all know, is the secret sauce to student achievement. It also has a ton of social determinants that are outside our control. Academic acceleration and retention are issues that all of us hear about in our email inbox at times, like why were these people moved forward? Do we have a mechanism to retain students if they haven't mastered learning, et cetera? Long story short is, we have separated these three issues into three different policies. We looked at that last time, and we're going to continue looking at them. They were all sort of lumped in in the same, and it was kind of messy. So stay tuned, and we will again talk about this on November 9th. Policy 7500, Community Learning Centers. For your edification in the back, Ms. Bolton brought us some history about them. It's in your packet. And we're doing a deep dive into the Community Learning Centers and all of our community-facing policies, like parent organizations, LSDMCs, and parent-family engagement. That's my way of kind of addressing the next two pages of these minutes, because we're going to continue talking about them, and we have elected as a committee to hold off until these are all ironed out and then present them as a package to our colleagues. But this is where we're kind of focusing our energies at the end of this calendar year on these community-facing policies. I will highlight just a couple things on Policy 9140, Parent-Family Engagement, that I think are important. You'll see a number of bullets under that boldface heading. We've changed a lot of the language. We've added caregivers. We've made language that's more inclusive. Kudos to Dr. Moffett for ensuring that we do this. And we're just trying to be more direct in how we actually, you know, want to be dealing with families in the community. Policy 3133, Remote Work. Not surprisingly, it's brand-new and had a lot of discussion at this meeting, a lot of discussion last Friday. We're going to continue discussing it. I know all three of us are doing our own research on it and trying to get it right. There's a lot of differing opinions about it, but I think, just speaking as Chair, and I think I can speak on behalf of the committee, we think this is an important thing to talk about and to tackle. Policy 6320, Purchasing of Goods and Services. President Lindy was on Policy Committee when we redid a lot of our purchasing policies to make them more inclusive of, you know, are our vendors treating their employees well? And so we have a graph, a couple graphs in the back here, minutes. You can look at the report out that we had from Ms. Trina Levens, Director of Purchasing. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, or probably better yet, her. Couple more, I promise. Outside Activities of Employees, you will see that soon. Evaluation of Employees, you'll vote on tonight. We continue to revisit bylaws. Ms. Bolton, I think, had the suggestion, and I think it's sound, that until we have like our new strategic plan, because we updated our bylaws with our updated committee names, when we had the old strategic plan, we're going to have a new one. So we're not going to suggest many changes right now until we have that a little further down the road. LSDMC, again, stay tuned for our package of community policies, and I am going to go ahead and present these minutes as written.
Thank you very much for the report. Chair Morosky, do Board members have questions or discussions on the report from the Policy and Equity Committee? Vice President Jones?
Clarification. This was a meaty agenda, all good stuff. My question is about the other business topic, Committee Work Plan and Strategic Plan. Wait a minute, am I in, I want to make sure I'm in the right spot. Hold on. I want to go, I'm, I want to reference, I believe, the conversation that you all had. I don't know if this is the right spot, about moving, about the student achievement aspect moving to Committee of the Whole. And I fully support that, 100%. We've made that change already. We have not talked about what that would mean in terms of all of those broad categories of student achievement moving there. And so I wanted to be in full support of the decision to, at one of our upcoming meeting, Cal meetings, to really give some time to that conversation around that. I thought it was good to point it out that we needed to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Morosky, did you have a response? Thanks, Vice President Jones. Other questions or comments for the Policy Committee? Okay. Hearing None, and because we do not have any other committee reports this evening, can I have a motion to accept the committee report from the Policy Committee?
No moves.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. We have done our discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee report is accepted. So we'll move right along here to Item G on our agenda. We have two items tonight on presentations, and should have a chance to have some important and good discussion, too. We're going to start with the Superintendent Evaluation. And I just want to spend a minute or two sharing, for anybody who is watching, I think, what this is and what this is not. We are, we are not evaluating the Superintendent this evening. The Superintendent has been here less than six months, I think. So we'll get there. What we are doing...
We are evaluating her every minute.
What, what we are doing is, we committed in the Superintendent's contract to agree each year on a set of measurable outcomes that would form the basis of her evaluation, which we will conduct in early fall next year. And what we are doing this evening is we are voting on what those targets should be. And there is a document that is shared on the screen here, and I won't read all of it to you, but I wanted to just highlight some of the big categories of things and the weights attached to them, because I think they speak quite well to the, some of the biggest issues our Board and our Superintendent in our district are focused on. So the first is student... It is tied for first in terms of the biggest weight in the evaluation. The second is improving communications, which is something that we are all very focused on. If you scroll down, there is culture within the organization, also very important. And then there's a last one, which is organizational management, or somebody might call it operations. So things like our Human Resources Department, our Transportation, as well as how we're engaging partners and community. So I just wanted to thank the Superintendent for all of the work that she has put into this. I wanted to invite the Superintendent or any of my colleagues on the Board who would like to share anything or ask any questions. Now is a good time for folks to do that. Superintendent, anything you want to share? It's fine if the answer is no.
I don't, I don't think I have anything to share, but I am available to answer any questions or clarifying questions that we have.
And so as we go through the year together, I think what, what people can expect to see is that we'll be returning to this document several times before we get to the fall, as we get data over the course of the year on how these things are going. And so I think you can expect our Board and our Superintendent to be very focused on outcomes and making a difference for students, families, and teachers across the district and our entire CPS community. So I do think we need a motion to adopt this piece as the evaluation tool for the Superintendent. Is there a question, Ms. Bolton?
A question right before I would make the motion, that this will reflect, this document will reflect the discussion that we've had previously.
And I think it already does.
And it's specific to what we set.
Okay. And if you have any questions about any of it, we can absolutely go through it, but as I looked at it, it reflected the most recent version.
I don't think it would be bad to actually, for the sake of the public, to be a little bit more specific about it and also a little, if the President can give a little bit of a timeline as to what we're really talking about, about evaluations, I think the public would appreciate that, since we have a relatively short, or the Superintendent, whoever.
Sure.
I think it's valid at this time.
And I'm happy to talk timeline. I want to maybe invite the Superintendent to talk through some of the items on there.
Sure. Thank you. So as our Board President shared, this represents our overall conversations and the conversations that we've been having now for the past several months about making sure that we focus on the right things and how we're looking at focusing on those things. And I think one of the things that I would add here is while these are the things that are a part of the evaluation, this is not all that we will be working on as a, as a school district leader and an overall organization. These are the ones that we have called up, that we said we would discuss. So starting with student achievement, looking at that overall area as 30%, we spent a lot of time talking about what is really best to look at in this space, recognizing that we are, that I started on May the 2nd, and many of the decisions for this year that would truly impact student achievement had already been done. And so how do we make sure that we're focusing on achievement, but we're also being responsive to the needs of our teams, to the needs of our staff? So we decided to really focus on lead indicators and really doing a lot of that work for lead indicators around how we're looking at professional development, providing that professional development for staff, and then how staff is using that professional development. The lead indicator number three was one that the Board actually had quite a bit of conversation around as well, because one of the questions is that there is professional development that we're providing, but then how are we transferring that professional development and the use of our curriculum into what's happening in the classroom? And so in doing that, that would be done through an instructional review process that is a joint-led process by, process by the district team and the school-based team, where we go into school buildings and essentially inspect what we expect. Our district has really invested quite a bit in curriculum across the board, and due to the pandemic, we were not always able to provide the level of support for teachers that they needed to truly maximize their implementation of that curriculum. And we're already beginning to see, we're beginning to see changes in what's happening in classrooms based on professional development, and we know that we'll continue to do that as we're continuing to provide that support. The one that we pulled out, there was a lot of discussion here, and at the end of, at the end of the year, we'll be able to come back to this one and talk about it. The one that we pulled out that was specific to an assessment was Algebra I, and that was one that I really encouraged, because Algebra I is so important across the board. All of our subjects are important, but when we really think about how we are preparing students and getting ready to have the conversation around graduation, graduation rates, and making sure that our students are on target as they need to be, Algebra I becomes that first baseline. So just, that was one for, for student achievement. Going through communications in every session that we have, and one of the things that I do see here, I did leave in the Gallup, it was Understand Mission and Purpose, so we will update that for our final, for the final one, under the first leading indicator. But the communications in every, in every listening session that I conducted, and I'm understanding the same, is happening in terms of feedback from our Board members and the information that they're receiving back through their Goals and Guardrails session, that there is more work for us to do as an organization around communication, both internally and externally. Some of the, the, the feedback that we're getting, just on the surface, just getting started, is at least if we are not liking the answer that's coming back, we're at least pleased that we're getting an answer. And so that's not the bar that we're looking to set, but that is something that's really important. So really surveying our staff, surveying parents, surveying students, to get feedback from them, and then making sure that we are comparing apples to apples, so using that information to form a baseline as soon as we possibly can. Our thought is around December 1st, and then set the target into January, once that data comes back to us in an anonymized way, so that we are able to really move forward. And we've done a lot around engagement and engagement session. So continuing to engage the community, to talk to the community, to be out in different facets of the community, just to be present, just and make sure that we're getting the feedback from them. Around culture, we know that, that culture will eat strategy for lunch, and so it's important that we have strong culture in everything that we're doing, because if our culture is not good, the strategy doesn't make a difference. So making sure that we're focusing on culture across the board, and that's really a lot with our staff. Our staff is doing a lot, but making sure that we're getting that feedback from them. And last but not least, equally as important, and while all of these are important, equally as important as what happens with student outcomes, is how we are organizing with, in terms of the management of the organization. And we, it's not a secret, two of our areas that we really know that we've needed to focus on for a period of time have been Human Resources and Talent and Transportation. And so both of those areas, making sure that we do complete reorganization in terms of what's happening within the department, the teams, the leads, where the teams have come in and they're doing a really good job of digging into the information. But we have to look at the systems that we're using, the technology that we're using, the processes that we're using, the, any kind of process mapping that needs to be done. And I think I can say, for both of those, there's a lot to be done around process mapping. There's a lot that we have kept here versus putting in paper, and so putting on paper. And so when it's time for the necessary updates, we want to make sure that that's done. And these are also departments, specifically Human Resources and Talent, that work... And these are also departments, specifically human resources and talent, that work directly with the treasurer's office, and so we have to make sure that all of those systems talk and speak together. So that would be a huge area for us. Last but not least, it's a part of our board policy that we have a parent-teacher organization in every one of our schools. We have 48 right now across the district, and so our goal is to make sure that we get to 65 active parent-teacher organizations by the end of the year, as well as continuing the work that we're doing through our partnerships. So while this would be one half of the evaluation, the other part is Ohio has really done deep work around superintendent standards and what those standards look like. So the first part of the evaluation would be half of the overall rating, and the second part would be based on all of the Ohio superintendent competencies, and those are broken down in the individual areas of competency as well.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. And then just, I'll be brief on timeline. We would conduct the final evaluation in the fall, and we would provide and receive, I think, from the superintendent updates as new data come in over the course of the year relevant for each of these different streams. So any other questions before we do a vote and move on to our strategic planning conversation? Great. Is there a motion to accept the evaluation instrument?
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. We've, any other discussion or questions? That's great. Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll on this one, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our second presentation here, which is on strategic planning. Thank you. You already have the slide up, Rob. Thank you. Okay. So if folks remember at the beginning of the meeting, I reviewed some of those priorities that we set for the fall as a board. One of the items on that list, I think it's the second one on that list, is about a strategic planning process. And so where we want to be, not tonight, but by the end of the meeting, two weeks from now, is that we've aligned on a board and likely vote on a resolution that lays out a couple different things. And they will be things like, over what time period will we create our next strategic plan? What will be included in the final set of deliverables? What role will different people play over the course of that time period? Groups like the board, or our engagement with the community, or the superintendent and her team. And so what we're going to do tonight is I'd like to share where I think there is some consensus, based on the conversations I've been able to have with people individually, and also share some areas where I think there is some disagreement, and give every board member a chance to advocate for anything they feel is important, and give any board member a chance to ask questions of one another for anything that they feel is important. And so again, there's nothing that we'll be voting on this evening, but my hope is as a function of this conversation, we'll get even more clarity on where is there some real alignment, where isn't there? In best case, there will be a wonderful consensus resolution we can vote on next time, and if we can't find that, we'll vote on a resolution that gets us as close to that as possible. So what I'll do is I just want to highlight where I think there is some real overlap, and then I'll highlight what I think are some of the open questions, and then give board members a chance to share perspective. And I'd also like the superintendent to share her perspective too on any part of this that she wants to speak to. So where I think there is consensus, I think everyone I spoke with, and I extended an invitation to everybody, I spoke to almost everybody, where there is a real consensus is that we want to get this done soon enough that it can influence the budget for next school year. What people didn't seem to support was a process that took so long that we would miss the chance to have our budget for next year reflect the priorities of the strategic plan. Another thing that felt like there was a lot of consensus was that there needs to be a very strong financial analysis that is included in that final set of deliverables. I think our treasurer made this point, and I think other board members made this point too, that whatever we say we're going to do, we need to have costed out how much that's going to, what the expenses are associated with that, and really planned what the revenue sources are for those initiatives. So I think there's real alignment, that we want to get this done this spring, and that in the final version, there needs to be a really thoughtful, responsible financial plan, and I think there's a lot of agreement there. I think there are some open questions around a couple things, and I tried to flag each of those at the bottom of the slide. So you'll see there it says items two and three and four to discuss. So I don't want to skip one, I just, this did not seem to be an area where there was a lot of disagreement. I think everybody, I think everybody was aligned on this one too. The work we're doing now with the setting goals and guardrails for the district is not separate from this, but it's the process we're using to figure out what are the most important things our community wants to see from us for kids over the course of the next three to five years. We have draft answers to that, but we will have an official answer to that in the next two months, and that that would form the starting point for what matters most over the next three to five years. So on items two and three and four, the questions where I think people did have different perspectives were things like on community engagement, who should be engaged on what topics, who is responsible for organizing that community engagement? The item three on there was what should board member engagement look like over the course of the strategic planning process? And these are all questions where I think reasonable people could have different perspectives. And then the fourth one, I don't think that there's a lot of disagreement here, but I wanted to check, and a number of people asked that we just get really clear about what's going to be in that final set of deliverables. So I listed here what I thought the perspective was for the board, but I also wanted to check to see if anybody had a different perspective. So with that, we have some time. I'll probably do what we normally do, which is give every person a chance to speak before anybody speaks a second time. And then once everybody's gone, if anybody wants to respond to something they heard somebody else say, we give people a chance to do that. That's our plan. I did ask our vice president if she would share a perspective first on any of these topics, where you have a particular perspective, and then we'll just go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. I just, I'm really appreciative that we have sort of this vision of what the strategic planning process would look like. And I do agree with President Lindy on all those issues where we reach consensus, so I won't go into that. I think where I see sort of my concerns, given what has been this board's experience in the past, is that where I see my concerns more is the sort of timing issues in terms of, you know, how long will this process take, and all of the little nuances that go into it. And I remember from the last process of strategic planning that we were involved with, that, you know, we were involved with a firm that sort of helped work with us, and it took us a lot of time to get started and get going and getting people together, the community-wise. And I also remember that we had assigned board members, and I'm not, I don't remember how many, I believe it might have been three, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, Ms. Bolton or Mr. Murawski on that. I believe there were three board members assigned. I think for me, the process is very important, and we say on here that we want to do community engagement, and we say that board member engagement is important. What I'm not clear about is what does that look like? With community engagement in particular, it's one of the things, and I've only done one goals and guardrail session, but I know just even in that session and in conversations with people in the community, that they feel it's very important that the buy-in come from the community upfront. So whatever we do with the community, they really should be involved in the beginning. And I don't know what that process would look like, whether it's committees or whatever, but that is very important to involve them from day one, to provide, offer input into the strategic planning. In terms of the board role, that's where I'm a little stuck, because I'm not quite sure. I know we have a role because it's stated in our bylaws. It's part of our requirement of being involved in setting the vision for the district. My question is what level of involvement needs to happen and what would be our role in that? And I think that that's, I have a feeling or a sense that maybe people have different understanding about that. And I just need to say, whether or not we're part of the groups that are created as part of the engagement process, or whether there's a separate role, I'm open to hearing more about that, but I definitely am advocating that there be a specific role in terms of how board members are involved. Now, my final comment around that is around who owns the strategic plan. That's not clear to me. I think there are some indications, just based on our work with the Council of Great City Schools, that the council believes that the superintendent owns that, the strategic planning process. I'm not totally convinced that that's the way our community should operate or work this through, but I think it's worthy of some discussion. What I want to see is a thorough process that engages people at all different levels, gives us sort of the outcomes that we want, and we do it in such a timeframe, you know? We don't, I don't want to see this drawn out. I thought our last strategic plan, you know, it was good, but it was pretty hefty. I'd like to see it more specific, if I could use that word. So that's my comment. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Vice President Jones. Who would like to go next? Mrs. Weinberg?
I'll be very brief. I totally agree with Vice President Jones as well. It was very confusing to me, and that was something I was going to bring up in terms of who owns the strategic plan. You have here in section B that the superintendent and team developed the strategic plan. I had a question on who is the team, so I wanted to elaborate on that. And then in terms of the community voice, I do definitely think that whatever process we decide on, that the community isn't just brought in one time, that they are a continuous process, that they're brought back in. I know from the strategic plan that was done before in the past, some have complained that they were brought on to do this process, and then it was kind of forgotten, and their input wasn't continued on throughout. But I think that that is something very important, and I would be open to really figuring out how we can work together as the board, the community, and the superintendent as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Other board members have perspective to share? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. First, I'm very excited about having the strategic plan. I think that some folks, I think it's, I think every district needs it. We've had a number of years when we didn't have one, for all intents and purposes, and this last one that we had, I think we're very proud of it, but of course, it was interrupted by COVID and what have you. So about a half of it didn't really get to have come to full fruition, I think. I think it is about timing and about ownership, and I think because of our context, our situation with the arrival of a new superintendent and what have you, most people that have done strategic plans will say, well, wait a minute, you've gotten very specific before you did the big stuff. It's sort of a reversal, but it was dictated in that way because of context. And I think that us making the determination to focus on governance and our relationship between the board and the superintendent, and to a certain extent, the treasurer, I think, has been very useful. And I think that once the community informs us through these listening sessions, and we've come up with a community-informed final draft of the guardrails and the goals, I see that as being a platform on which we launch additional strategic planning. And they remain our commitments, and they, at that point in time, it sounds like it's December 5th that we would be voting on that, at that time then, I see, and this is just my personal view, that's when I say we hand those five items, guardrails and goals, to the administration. I think we get confused when we have both the administration, the board, and the community doing something at the same time. I think that has always, whether it was New Shore, Old Shore, or some of this other stuff that we were doing, I think it got very difficult. I would prefer to hand over for a couple of months to the superintendent and treasurer and staff and whomever they would involve, to say, okay, here's these five and five, this is what we would suggest as a proposal, these are some concerns, these are some directions, these are some interim efforts over the next three or five years that we would do in order to achieve this. So they'd be doing that, and then I think the board would be perhaps deciding what to do about engagement, because I think engagement actually belongs to the board from that standpoint. And the engagement, I think we probably need somebody to help facilitate that engagement that would have to take place on several things. We have not changed our vision or our mission since 2014, so that's in need. There are also huge issues in public education and certainly in CPS that are very explicit and very important, that would help define the district and the board's work, as well as the superintendent's work. So my thought would be that there'd be engagement for a couple of months facilitated by whomever, and it would not, while the administration's actually doing the how of what we would be doing with the guardrails and the goals, if we, and I'll say this as finance chair, if we want to inform this coming budget and this five-year plan, we would have to not only have the superintendent's five goals and five guardrails kind of outlined by no later than the beginning of April, but we'd also have to have finished our engagement with the community because by around April, because that's when budget stuff starts. I mean, it starts now, it's already started in October, but in April, that's when, again, we as a board and as an administration are worrying about the budget. I don't think once you start the budget, you necessarily have to continue additional community engagement. We can do that as checks along the way and reporting to the public, but I think considering the engagement we did to find our new superintendent, the engagement that's taking place now in these wonderful focus groups, and then I think building a budget is kind of an internal matter to a certain extent, so I think that's important. Separating everybody's role, I think, is helpful, but we have to be able to vote on a five-year plan, I think the internal auditor will verify, I think that has to be voted on in May, and then the budget actual for the next fiscal year has to be done by June 30th. So we could, it's a tight schedule, but it's not ignoring all the work that's been done and the value of the guardrails and the goals. And it could be done then, and we vote, and we move on, and we will have asked the community, what are their big issues? How can you, as a community, the community owns, I mean, even Great City Schools tells us, the community is the owner of this district. And so I think if they could help us with a vision and a mission that they see in some of the big questions, I know Mr. Lindy and I have talked about one of the big issues is growth. There's other issues too that need to be addressed. So I'm very excited about it. It was extremely beneficial when we did this before, and the community valued it, just like they valued the search for the superintendent, and they are really valuing these focus groups. So I mean, I'm just, I'm very excited. We can get this done, and it can inform the five-year plan, it can forecast, and it can inform the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Lindy. Just a couple of new things. One, I want to second the goals-guardrail piece that Ms. Bolton led off with, because I was going to include those in my comments, so I don't need to do that now, I just kind of want to second that. Regarding the community engagement, I don't, full disclosure, I don't know precisely what this means, that's what we're going to figure out, but I do think, and remember, Weinberg kind of touched on this, too, I believe, but having been a part of the last process, which I thought was good, and our former colleague, Vice President Messer, led a lot of that, because it's what he did for a living, which was helpful. I will say, in my opinion, I don't think it's a secret to Ms. Jones or Ms. Bolton, the community engagement piece felt a little sloppy. Dr. Moffett was here, she may give me a high five right now, I don't know if she was a part of it. It was just kind of like, let's, you know, we'll throw the spaghetti on the wall, not stick around to see what sticks, we'll just throw it and walk out the room. That's a mean, but it felt a little sloppy. And so whatever, again, I don't have the fix, I'm not an expert at this, but I do think drawing that up, and again, who owns that is important. The board and superintendent and everybody and their sister and brother and cousin and nephew owning it was a bad idea. So I would just like to kind of say that. Second, I also want to vote, or second, Ms. Bolton's point that we should probably have this adopted a couple of months, I would even say April, definitely beginning of May. I would say, if we can, definitely beginning of May, but April, if we could, I think that'd be good. The only thing I'll add, and this is probably goes without saying, but I've done enough stuff from my life to know that you should probably just say it anyway, is that, and this is my finance hat on, I've been on Finance Committee this year, and I don't often wear my finance hat, and Ms. Roberts is proud of me right now, Jen Wagner would be proud of me, I know he is, but, you know, I look at the five-year forecast a lot in that committee, and Jen just gave an update on the five-year forecast, we have a five-year strategic plan, isn't that great? The five-year forecast isn't great, and it's not because we're not great, we win awards literally every year for our financial stewardship and transparency, it's just because entities that control our destiny don't like our kids, which I'm fond of saying, and I say at most meetings, but they don't. And I'm talking about Columbus, and we're funded unconstitutionally, and the ARPA money, while great, not so great when you look at the, so up there, I don't know, it probably, again, it probably doesn't need to be added in black and white, but I do, you know, the superintendent and team, obviously that's inclusive of the treasurer, but I do think it's appropriate, again, to Ms. Bolton's point, new superintendent, new board, but also the five-year forecast we're looking at could be grim if we're not super careful, and however that ties into this, I think, is a good idea. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks, Mr. Morosky. Mr. Craig?
Yeah, so I want to echo, you know, everything folks have said so far, but also kind of offer out just two or three ideas that are coming to my head, and I think one is the importance of the fact that we've done so much community engagement around so many things, and I know you're already doing your own level of community engagement and your own discussion, but I think some of it also has to be community explaining, because I think one of the struggles with our strategic plan is that people don't know what we're already doing. People don't know what's already happening, and so when we're getting feedback on stuff, folks may not be aware that, you know, there's already this program for XYZ, there's already blah, blah, blah. And so on some level, it is an educational opportunity that may be part of that community engagement. I know, again, we've been, Dr. Moffett, you know, was leading that effort with Jen on our financial education, getting the community to understand what these things mean. To Board Member Morosky's point, reason why our five-year plan looks the way it looks is not because we don't spend the money correctly, it's because we get less and less every year from the state, that there are folks who are actually actively trying to cut the amount of funds that come to our district to make it harder for us to do what we do, which is educate students. So I think that part of it is, whatever part of this strategic plan really needs also be a reflection of educating folks what we're doing, and this is where we're going with it, which will come from our goals and our guardrails as well, and a lot of other aspects. I think the second thought to my head was that this is something that, to a large part, is the superintendent's kind of owning the information that we've given her, owning the feedback we've given her, owning feedback communities given to you to kind of own that process, right, to build it. Because I don't think it's our role to come in here and every day tell you what should be in your strategic, what should be in the strategic plan or not. And that part, I think, will help facilitate getting it done quicker, will help facilitate us getting something that we can vote on faster, because I think sometimes what happens is we all have ideas, we all have pet projects we want in the strategic plan, we all have things that we think are the most important part, and if we're all throwing those ideas at you left and right, there's no way you'll get this done in the timeframe that makes sense. And then the third thought I had on this was also, we have the unfortunate thing of having this lovely cliff that we have to deal with within our budgeting, we have infrastructure that needs to be adjusted, we have all these other things that are really important to how the district functions and operates. I know we're, we talked about this within your goals, as everyone can see, that we were doing some rethinking of transportation and other aspects of what we're doing here. I think that is so important to understand that that is such a crucial part to how the strategic plan will look, is that a district won't look the same today as it'll look five years from now in how things work and operate. And so as we build those goals and build that up, being able to understand that and be able to appreciate that factor, that the district will look different, whether it's a bigger district, whether that is a district that functionally operates a different speed or different way, is really important. And so I really appreciate the idea of the superintendent being able to kind of lead that effort and build that in to the strategic plan, so that it really does look like a plan for not the district of today, but a plan for the district that we're going to try and get to five years from now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig. I'll share a couple of thoughts, and then I want to invite our superintendent, if she has thoughts she'd like to share. And then what I said at the outset is, if anybody has said something that makes you want to respond or ask a question about it, I want to give everybody a chance to do that, and then we'll move on. So I think, for my part, there are all kinds of answers to these questions that would feel totally fine to me as a board member. I love the idea that there's some meaningful stakeholder engagement as we figure out how in the world do we get from our current state to whatever those final goals and guardrails are. I think there are really important questions there. I think there are reasons to engage stakeholders internal to CPS, our teachers, our administrators, everyone who's a part of the CPS family, but also people outside, because they have perspective that we don't have. I think there are lots of ways that that could look, lots and lots and lots of ways that that could look. The thing that feels really important to me is that that engagement is about getting feedback on how we get to those goals and guardrails, not doing a new visioning process. After we've come up with these goals and guardrails, we've taken them to all these different community meetings, we've done the town halls, we've done the community survey, we've done the multiple retreats, we finally get adopted. What I don't want to do is then restart a visioning process to figure out what should the future of CPS be. What I want to do is make what we're currently doing that process. I think all of those questions matter a ton. I think we should be asking them right now. And then whatever we vote on in our final goals and guardrails should reflect that, and so that we can then spend this chunk of time figuring out how we get there. As far as board engagement goes, I do, I would value the opportunity a couple of times over the course of the spring to hear from our superintendent what's emerging, hear the things coming out of the goals and guardrails process, here's the things we're hearing from these different stakeholder groups, here's the perspective you're bringing with the experience that you have, here are your early thoughts about what our most important strategies need to be and how we finance them, board, what feedback or questions do you have? And then we do that, not just at the very end, but that there's a chance to do that a couple of times as we go through the spring process. And that's just from this one board member's perspective, it's something that I think I'd find helpful. And other than that, I don't know that I have anything that wouldn't be repeating what I think I've heard colleagues share. So I'll just leave those two thoughts out there and invite our superintendent to share.
Thank you. So I think, just a few things. One, I, too, have been very pleased with the student outcomes governance process and conversation. I think coming in as a new superintendent and being able to work through this process together, begin to own it together, even though it's new for the board, it is new for me, obviously, as a new superintendent, but following that process and working through the grittiness, if you will, of how to get to what are we focused on, are we most concerned about as a superintendent and board, but also as a greater community. So I really think that's the right work. I also think that to Ms. Bolton's point, or Board Member Bolton's point, is, as I understand it, through Council of Great City Schools, and, you know, we engage with them because we wanted them to usher us through this process. And so, and as a part of that is taking those goals and guardrails and then doing just that, passing them off, because when we come back to the strategic plan, I would like to make the analogy of the strategic plan to a school improvement plan. The, a school improvement plan, regardless of what it has become in many places, the purpose of the school improvement plan is to really give the strategies for overall school improvement. So this is what we're, these are our goals, this is what we're going to do to get to that improvement. The strategic plan ideally is the same thing. It is, now that we know what our goals are, these are the things that are non-negotiables, i.e. our guardrails, that are important to us and to the greater community, how we go about doing that has to be the responsibility, in my mind, this is now just my thoughts, but how we go about doing that has to be the responsibility of the person that's going to be held accountable for making sure that it happens. And so, yes, we have done a lot of conversations and engagement. Engagement before I got here, I've done quite a bit of engagement since I've been here, the goals and guardrail processes, asking for more engagement, that is still information. And so that information doesn't go away, even when it's time to then transition to say, okay, this is everything that we've been provided. Now, from that, these are the strategies that we're looking at that will then ultimately lead us to student achievement. So it's really, it's unique to think about having someone else determine what those strategies are going to be, and the person that's being held accountable for making sure that those strategies happen is not necessarily involved in that process. And so I think it's important that we work through that and talk through that, because I also think it's relevant that you bring people to the room and to the table that have information to add in terms of that space, not just that this is a project that we've always done and this is a great project, but what is the data telling us about it? What information do we have to provide? Are we still in that space now that we were several years ago in terms of looking at that? Is the information that we have, is it necessary for us to take that information and tweak the vision and mission based on the information that we're seeing, or are we still focused on those, that those same areas in terms of vision and mission? But the strategic plan is the implementation. How are we actually going to get from where we are now to making sure that all of our schools are at a certain space? When we talk about staff, I think I heard the term staff, I heard the term administration, that it's all in the same. The staff is, belongs to the administration. And so as we work together, the treasurer and I, which we are working together hand in hand, really on everything that we're doing, as we do that, it's a part of bringing those teams together as well on the administrative end, so that we're getting what we need, you know, in terms of what we're looking at to move forward. So I do think that there is some, because of how I understand that it was done before, which I have shared, that there is some concern, possibly, that me and a few of my staff members are going to get off in a room, and we're going to come up with a list of all of these strategies that we're looking to do, and bring those things back in terms of the strategic plan. Well, if those things are really, really wonderful, that might be great, and everybody would be really excited about it. But I don't know that that gets us the collective buy-in and the conversations that we need to then share that information more globally across the board about what we do next.
So thank you, Superintendent. So want to see if any board members have anything they want to share, just given what colleagues and our superintendent have offered. If not, that's fine, but if anybody wants to respond to anything or ask a follow-up question, now is the time to do that. Ms. Bolton?
I don't disagree with anything that's been said, even the ones that I, how shall I say it, are not predisposed to accept. So the first thing I would say is that I defer to the administration on the how. We have experts, we have somebody that's going to be, at least two or three people that are held accountable. I don't necessarily think that the board or the community is the ones to determine the how. That's always been the way that I've separated. But I do think the community and our stakeholders and the role of the board is to help determine the vision, the mission, the what. Where do you want your district to be? Now, if all I'm supposed to do is hold the superintendent accountable or manage the superintendent, you don't need a strategic plan. You need only an implementation plan. But our role in a strategic plan is to be the voice of the community, and more particularly, have the community kind of design the district that they want. And then, you know, with all of our experts and our efforts and our history and the future and all the other things influencing, I think a strategic plan requires a vision, requires a mission, requires the big questions be answered and direction be given, and, but the, and that's everybody doing that. But, so I'm real excited to figure out how we engage in this, but I do feel strongly that the community defines what their school district needs to look like and how to get there. As a retired educator and what have you, I'm, and we'll get in the weeds, and we'll say, oh, I like this option, why don't you try this? But in the big picture of things, that belongs to the folks that we have put in charge. But our role is to, we do more than manage the superintendent and the treasurer.
I have a question.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Superintendent Wright?
So one question I would have there, in terms of the piece that you shared, a Board Member Bolton, which I completely agree with, is that, do we see, are we seeing that as synonymous with the goals and guardrails process? Because it sounds very much like what's happening right now as a part of goals and guardrails.
Can you turn on your mic, Ms. Bolton?
I was having a conversation with the super over there, sorry. I think that they are the platform, they are the foundation. We've spent all this time, it's helping to determine our relationship with you and the treasurer and the communities chiming in, and I'm telling you, they're rewriting a little bit, or, you know, doing some word spitting, which is great. That is the platform on which we launch, but, and those do not change. But they do not necessarily say the vision and the mission, and they do not answer the larger questions that board members and the board members have to help with, and you have to help with, and the community is paying for. I mean, that's, it's the community that said we want a facilities master plan, and we'll spend $1.2 billion, 80% of it being local. The community said that they wanted community learning centers or whatever. Those are big, huge things, well beyond necessarily goals and guardrails, but the goals and guardrails are determining our daily efforts, and they have to, they're going to fit within whatever that vision and mission is, because I think they're born of our context and history and this wonderful listening stuff that we're doing now. And it certainly has helped the board to figure out what we're supposed to be doing. So they're crucial, fundamental.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other board members who'd like to respond to something that came up in the first? I would just offer to other board members, I think some people ask, you know, questions like, well, this says blank, what do we mean by blank? I think the answer is, at this point, we don't know. And I think what I wanted to do is create a moment here where if you have an opinion that it should be X and should not be Y, please say it, because that way we'll try to get as close as we can or entirely to a consensus in the resolution that we vote on next week. So if you, and if you don't have an opinion, that's totally fine, but I think the miss would be, if you want this to, if you feel strongly that what we mean by this should be blank, not something else, or in that framework, I really want to create a space for people to share that. Okay. Rob, did Dr. Moffett want to share a comment? I know she's, I think, online. She did, but she's gone twice. I wanted to see if there's anybody who hasn't gone at all.
Dr. Moffett is online. She did a written comment.
Would you read it for us?
Yeah. "The council's providing suggestions and the framework, but the final decisions and how Cincinnati implements what is best for Cincy needs to remain with the board."
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Rob. Any others? I will give you the third try, but I wanted to see if anybody else wants to go.
This will really be my fourth as I talk to the superintendent, but who's counting? My, my question about the timing, Ben, is we, we won't see the final drafts of the guardrails and goals until we vote on them on December 5th?
No, we should be able to talk about them in the Cal meeting on the 16th of November, several weeks before we do the actual vote.
Okay, so, but did I mishear about the, when we, planning on voting on what our strategic plan looks like? We're going to do that before we conclude the final goals and guardrails?
So the current plan was to have a strategic planning process set up by the 8th of November. So the, the last business meeting when we could vote on that would be the 7th of November, which would be the day before. At that point in time, what will have happened is all of the focus groups will have finished, but we will not have had a chance to meet and look at the synthesized results of those. So that's the, that's the, and we can always change any of these things, but that's what the current timeline says.
Can you clarify what you just said? The, the expectation or the, the hope is that we, by November 8th, we will have outlined a strategic planning process?
So when we, if we rewind to August, when we were voting on what should the board's priorities be for the next three months, the second one on there was this piece about a strategic planning process. And, and by that, what it, what it said on there, and I think it's probably on the second page of the agenda tonight, it says, there's a clear process and timeline for the district's next strategic plan that is adopted by the board and that we're on track with respect to that timeline. Does that answer the question? Sounds like not. Go, what's the, yeah. You sure? Okay. Last call. Okay, so we'll, we'll move on. Thanks, everybody, for sharing where people are. I think we'll have a chance to revisit this at our next business meeting. And I, I think I want to ask Board Member Craig on item H, if there, we've, we've gotten through a lot of governance coaching updates just naturally in the last 45 minutes, but is there anything we haven't talked about that you want to make sure you raise?
So I just wanted to point out, if you, we've gone through a bunch of it, but if you go to the website for our, our home website, there, there's actually a link to all of the goals and guardrails trainings that we're doing. There are a number of them that are open sessions for parents, students, and whatnot that folks are invited to attend and provide their feedback. Additionally, you can go there to also give your feedback through the survey. So we want to make sure that everybody is aware that if you simply go to www.cps-k12.org, it will be on the homepage of the site there, a link to each of the sessions that we go on as well as the survey.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Okay, so unless there are other updates, people want to share, questions they want to ask about governance coaching, I think we'll move on to the item I, which is going to be resolutions. Anything else on H before we keep going? Moving on to item I, we have four resolutions this evening. The first, we're going to hear from Ms. Weinberg.
Yes, so I present the resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2022-2023 school year. I present this as written and I hope for passage.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. We have a second from Mr. Morowski. Any discussion? Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, we have a second resolution. Would anyone like to offer this one? It's an alcohol waiver for Kilgore's 100th birthday party.
Thank you, Brandon. So we have a motion from Mr. Craig?
Yeah, so we have a motion for a resolution to request a waiver for alcohol use at Kilgore Elementary's 100th birthday party celebration by the Kilgore Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Only to, only to add, I know Ms. Bolton would, would want it added, you know, we passed these out of policy, this is inclusive of beer and wine, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Also for the adults, I would imagine, and not for the elementary school students.
That's correct.
Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, we have a third resolution coming from Board Member Bolton.
Yes, thank you. Resolution amending board policy 4220, evaluation of classified employees and renumbering to board policy 3221, evaluation of employees. I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Morowski, any discussion? Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Last, we have a resolution to amend board policy 5200. Mrs. Weinberg, did you mention to me that you wanted to read this or that Dr. Moffett would want to read it?
If she's unable to do it, I think she has. Is she able to do it?
I am not sure. Would, we can have a board member officially offer it as a resolution, but if she would like to share any context or read the title of it, that's certainly fine. Let's look at our lawyer to make sure I'm doing nothing wrong. Excellent. Rob, would you like to come on for any of this? Dr. Moffett, would you like to read a part of the resolution? Okay, Mrs. Weinberg, would you mind offering it?
All right, I, I was going to say I support. I am presenting the resolution amending board policy 5200 for attendance, and I present it as written and hope for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion?
Real quick, real quick.
Mr. Morowski?
So this was one of those, thank you, President Lindy, this is one of those policies I referred to in the minutes that we get to later. So from the attendance retention acceleration policy that I noted, we're splitting them up. So if you look at this policy and the public looks at this policy, you'll see a ton of red lines and a ton, or a lot of additions. So just so folks are clear, all the redlining is from the other policies, retention and academic acceleration that will become their own. And I do think it's of note to, to call out some items that, again, Dr. Moffett was instrumental in getting included regarding taking into account absences, you know, so the board considers the following factors to be reasonable excuses, and there's a lot of standard stuff. But I would like the public to know that Cincinnati Public Schools, and again, all of us had a lot to do with this, but Board Member Moffett especially, I believe. You know, we're taking the, absences related to visiting with students' parents who are incarcerated, absences related to career and internship experiences, absences due to a student's placement in foster care or change in foster care placement, absences related to students experiencing homelessness, absences excused because of a need for a student to attend, testify, or otherwise participate in court proceedings, or other emergencies and circumstances in which the judgment of the superintendent constitutes a good and sufficient cause for absence. I just think it's notable to call that out because our students, as we talk about a lot here, undergo a lot of challenges, a lot of students in Ohio don't, and I think it's important for folks to know that those items were included.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morowski. That's great. Any, I should not editorialize, sorry. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I, I, I think the chair is, is right to emphasize this. This is a very inclusive policy and deals with our population, our kids, our families, and some of the demands that they have. I, I should have asked the chair, but it didn't occur to me till the beginning of this meeting. In, in this, the board considers the following factors to be reasonable excuses for time missed school on what is E, absence during the school day for medical or dental appointments such as absence may require a written note from the medical or dental. I wonder, based upon the reference on the next page regarding, in the first big, big paragraph on the next page where we reference certificated school psychologist, or I wonder if, I wonder if there should be some reference, and maybe Dan might help us with this, that where we say medical or dental professionals or, or excuse for appointments, I wonder if we should add counseling? Because not all counseling is necessarily with a psych, you know, with a psychiatrist, may not be medical, but it could be a psychologist as such. And then my other question, and I, I should have thought of this when we were doing it, and I, I'm, on board approve, participate in enrichment activities approved by the board or by the Board of Education or in extracurricular activities, I'm just wondering if that's pre or post the, the attendance? Because it's Ohio Revised Code, and I know we added that to, is that, is, is, yeah. And is it okay, Ben, if Dan addresses that one? And, and the other, the final one, and this is such a great policy, I'm so sorry, I'm even doing this from the floor, and we don't have to do it, I'm just, I wonder if, is there, for the superintendent, for general counsel, and I hate to say this, but any threat of violence? I mean, is, does this cover any issue of threat of violence? And a kid be absent if there's been, you know, a, a challenge or a threat or?
I, I would think that it does. You asked me or Dan? I'm sorry.
Um, right now, I'm asking you.
Go ahead. You can.
Yeah, so, so the, the way I think of this is that catchall in K, other emergencies or circumstances in which the judgment of the superintendent as determined by the principal constituted good and sufficient cause for absence from school, that, that's a catchall that covers many kind of exigent circumstances.
That would be great. Okay, well, hopefully we don't use it for that purpose, but that covers, feel good about. And then what about counseling in that other paragraph?
Yeah, so.
An E or not?
Again, that, that's taken from language from the Ohio Administrative Code, but I, I think a mental health appointment excused by a counselor would likely be something the principal and the superintendent would support as well. So if you wanted to expressly add that, you'd ask for an amendment or a friendly amendment. Is that, yeah?
Any, for, for, from our perspective, anything that required anything medical, so that's with whether it's a psychiatrist, a mental health therapist, whether it would be with the family, a family therapist, a family counselor, any of those things would go under the umbrella of medical. But if you wanted to call that out expressly, we could support.
I, I trust you completely on this. I just worry that, you know, it takes a couple of years to get the policy down to where it might be implemented and if there's some way to be more inclusive there, especially post-COVID and especially since we are so aware of the mental health issues that we are confronting, if that's okay. But I'm glad that K covers it, the other, the other reference. I'd rather not have to specifically reference that.
Just so I'm clear, so, so you are, you are not asking for a friendly amendment? You're okay with the language as is?
I'm okay with the language regarding threat of violence. It seems to be covered in K, but I think I would like to add.
On the counseling piece.
If that's, if, and then.
I think our motion maker is Mrs. Weinberg.
Support.
Any, any concerns here? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Any other discussion on the motion before we vote? Like to express my gratitude for seeing bona fide religious holidays in there as well. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
As revised, yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Moving right along, we are now entering the superintendent's of schools section. Mrs. Weinberg, do we have any retirements to announce this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to ask for a motion and a second on the recommendations, and then in discussion, we can discuss about the issue that President Sellers raised. But is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendations?
No move.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. So under discussion, could we hear from the administration just a bit about that?
Sure. So as has been shared with me from the onset and transitioning to the district and with our full human resources team, is that any additional assignments were added to the superintendent's rec without regards to where it was actually being paid from, because it was an additional assignment for the staff. From there, we would then have to add that to payroll so they're actually paid through our processes. So they're not paid outside of us, they're paid inside of us. And then we do bill CFT for those stipends, but that's why it was added there. We do understand that last year it came up, that apparently it was removed last year, but there was no indication collectively that it was not necessarily supposed to be there. So I think what we would need would need clarity as to whether or not, yes. I think if anything, it, it, it airs on the side of caution in terms of making sure that if there, if, if it does require additional board action, because these are our staff members that are receiving additional pay assignments, even though those pay assignments are reimbursed to us by CFT.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Wright. Do board members have any other questions about the superintendent's recs? Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. I believe we have a revised treasurer's report this evening, so I'd like a motion to adopt the revised treasurer's report, please.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion on the treasurer, the revised treasurer's report? Ms. Roberts, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay. I was telling Ms. Bolton that's the first time I can remember her not having a question on a treasurer's report. I wish Jen were here, if you're watching, Jen. I hope you saw that. Yeah, please. That's good. I mean, I think, I think, I think it's wonderful. So we have two items on board matters this evening. We're entering the, the second part of our agenda here, and I think they both come from Board Member Weinberg, and I will turn it over to her.
All right. I'll be really quick. In terms of pedestrian safety, I just wanted to kind of hear some of the other board members' thoughts in terms of also with the superintendent, what the plan might be to really decrease that. I know we've experienced some lives being lost due to pedestrian safety, our kids, whether it is on the way to school, on the way home from school, or whether they're in their community. I just wanted to hear some thoughts from everyone else about pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Would you like board members to respond first or the superintendent?
Yes, I would love for board members to respond first and then superintendent.
Board members have any comments or responses?
What is the question? It was just about pedestrian safety and the thoughts on how it's increasing among our students.
Mr. Morowski?
I have a lot of thoughts. They haven't changed in the whole time I've been on this board, which is depressing. It's a, it's, it's a problem, it's a crisis, and it's going to be a community-wide effort. You know, we did not create the car or automobile, and we're not going to fix people's desire to speed, but working with city council via Brandon and Cream or Mr. Craig, Dr. Moffett, sorry, my allergies making my brain slow. You know, it, it's all hands on deck, you know, we just re-upped our relationship with CPD, we need enforcement, you know, we need city to help us with crossing guards, et cetera, et cetera, but things are, aren't good and things haven't gotten any better. We've lost, how many students since I've been on the board? I'm looking at Carolyn Eve, four, three or four. So I think we can take a leading role in it. I think we have a community or a city council that's amenable to this issue. Councilman Jeffries talks about it all the time. I think we have allies there, but things aren't good, and we're doing the best we can. I'm proud of us, I'll say that, but it's a community effort.
Any other board members? Thanks, Mr. Morowski. Mr. Craig?
Yeah, so just echoing and kind of tagging on to Mr. Morowski's point, I think this is one of those things that is a relationship that the crossing guards and that, that are necessary to do it, the community members that are out there who are watching and keeping their eye out, the folks who are actually choosing to follow our traffic laws and be safe drivers around our community are big parts of that, and I think we've done a good job of working with and being attentive to where school bus stops are, where they're picking up and dropping kids off are. I think this is one of those struggles, it's been a struggle since, and, you know, since cars started. started driving around the schools, that we're going to see some of these problems that keep occurring. I think it's really just intuitive to us, pay attention to things that we do control. So the things like where do kids get off and on the buses, where do they have to walk from and walk through to get to and from school, some of those type of things. But again, I think this is one of those things that we're going to have the conversation with the city officials to really build up more of an effort and find out what ways we can help them to recruit more of crossing guards, so we don't have a lack of crossing guards in some important locations. I know, I think we've all driven past places where you see 20 or 30 kids all at one corner, and there's nobody there to help them, there's nobody there to direct them, and so.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolton?
I agree with what my colleagues have said thus far. I do believe we did, as a, as a district, were leaders within the state regarding walkability and transportation plan, master plan passed that got the city a million and some dollars for infrastructure fixes around our schools. Not all of those dollars were spent around our schools, even though we got the grant and what have you, and it's been updated, and it's a tremendous plan. I think it is something that Mr. Craig can share with the city folk, that we'd really like to revisit that plan together. We'd really like to revisit also our Vision Zero commitment that we passed as well, which is a pedestrian piece. I mean, we're on the record, and I do reiterate, I'll say it, especially since the treasurer's not here, because she always gets mad at me when I say it, I really want control of the crossing guards, not just to pay for them, but I want that for the district. The other piece is, as the ad hoc committee worked on neighborhood schools, and we think in terms of every, that one mile radius around the schools, I do think that for police, both the traffic divisions and even the neighborhood divisions, the district divisions, I really do wish that they would be able to provide more coverage at our start of the day and at the end of the day. Years ago, there was a higher police presence among, within our neighborhoods during dismissal and arrival, and I, and with the relationship that the superintendent is developing with CPD, and also with the efforts that we're making on crossing guards and the checking of the bus stops, you know, meeting that criteria, I think we're doing a lot of good stuff. But it, to both of their points, it really is a partnership with the city and our neighborhood councils, and there's great data that's, that is circulated among neighborhood councils three or so years ago about traffic dangers in and around our schools. We're in, and so that, all that research has been done, and done very well, so appreciate it.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Any other comments? Ms. Wright?
Sure. So I will just, just add, I think there were several of us that attended the pedestrian safety town hall that was done a couple of months ago, and they talked really more specifically about some of those things in the community, i.e. additional bumps, you know, in the road, you know, doing more sidescape or streetscape so that it limited where you could be in some of the areas. So I think that that's, those are some of the things that are happening on the city end. In the last week, however, I've had conversation with both the city manager as well as the vice mayor around a joint pedestrian safety campaign that we partner in together as, you know, with the council focus, a city manager focus, which would also be the police department and all of the other areas, and the school district. There was reference that this had been done, you know, previously, I think that there was a joint campaign that was done around Don't Trash Cincy, when we, there was a conversation around how.
Don't Trash the Natty.
Don't Trash the Natty, okay, I knew it was one of them. But making sure that there was some focus there. So this past month, we do know that this has been Safety Month, and so we have really focused on it as a school district, but I would agree that it is much larger than just us. It is, it's really, it really is going to take the support of the overall community. The other piece to that is also education for students on safe play, because most recently the issue in the neighborhood was not just a pedestrian issue or a driver issue or driver not honoring the rules of the road, it was a play issue, where a child ran into the street in the middle of play. And so it's continuing to work with our little ones around helping them understand that the safe, safety measures that are needed in terms of play.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mrs. Weinberg, was there more on this topic that you wanted to raise?
No, there isn't. Good enough, thank you.
Sure. So we'll move to the next one, which is metro safety.
So on the metro safety, I wanted to actually title it metro and bus safety, if that's okay. Just kind of wanted to have a quick discussion on board members. We have been receiving lots of emails, whether it's from concerned parents, or as Ms. Bolton usually says, citizens, I'll use that word instead of constituents, really just having a discussion on what needs to be done in regards to our children arriving late to school, being picked up from school late, not being taken to the correct stops, or being asked to get off at incorrect stops. But I just kind of wanted to have a brief discussion with the colleagues, I don't know how important that is, about the safety of our students on the buses and vans and metro.
That sounds like for me, that was that a?
I'm going to have my colleagues go first, and then you can go.
And can you just say the question one more time, Mrs. Weinberg?
So I just wanted to get some input from the other board members in regards to how they are feeling about the emails that we have been receiving about the safety of the students on the buses and vans.
Thank you.
And metro, sorry.
Board members have thoughts? Mr. Craig?
So I'll take the time to share my little soapbox that I talk about all the time in budget finance, which is that I think, you know, the reality is that our district is such a wide-scoping district, and in order to get students from one side of the district to the other side of the district, the reality is that it's just going to be a challenge, no matter how many bus drivers we have, no matter how many buses we have, to do it in a way that's going to be effective and efficient. So to that point, I think that's why, you know, the superintendent's already talked about in her goals, that we will be looking at some of those means of how we do it, but I think the other aspect is, where do our students go to school and why, and what programs and opportunities are there for them? Because I think the long-term fix to our buses situation, the long-term fix to our transportation situation, is that if students are going to school closer to where they live, you have an easier way of transporting those students left and right, and so I think that's the reality. I also think, and from my own experience of folks that I know who have their kids on the buses and that kind of deal, there are challenges right now, and I saw a sign up the other day for bus drivers that were like on the road, like looking for people to come in and do this work. It's not something that we are just going to easily fix from our end. I think we've been, we've improved it, and there's more to be done, but I do think long-term fixes are much further out than what we can do in the short term.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Other board members with perspective to share? Ms. Bolton?
First and foremost, it happens occasionally where a child falls asleep in the bus and ends up back at the, as my mom would call it, the car barn, where they, you know, where the buses park. I'm concerned, because years and years ago, one of the vendors kept telling us that they had the capacity to put something, and maybe this, maybe the cell phone takes care of this now, I'm not sure, where you literally have, for our little people especially, teenagers aren't going to be interested in doing this, and they will find someplace to put it, but where you really GPS each kid. And I know parents, some parents have that capacity and some parents don't, kids, I think that's something that we need to look at. And I would hope that the district would remind our vendors to please check their buses before they take it to the parking lot, or, you know, walk the aisle to make sure, and then that there's notification, some kind of notification that goes to our transportation office when indeed the kid has not been returned to the right place. Not that the parent might know or not know yet, but that the vendors would know. And the other thing that continues to be a problem for metro is we still don't have unique riders, which we're approaching, we're in the second quarter, and we can't keep doing that. They, I know there's an industry issue or something about these cards, but the other piece of not knowing the uniqueness or the on-time delivery for the metro piece is that, you know, last year in our crisis, we had staff spend a significant amount of time when the kids, the teenagers were gathered on a corner or at a, at a bus stop, waiting for those, I think maybe we need a little bit more of staff presence when it's most possible or convenient. We're lucky that a lot of our community members, you know, opened like the church door at Grace Episcopal or something, but we had a higher staff profile during this crisis where these kids were gathering, and there's just so little space on the sidewalk, and driving is so bad right now.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any other board member comments? Otherwise, we'll go to Superintendent Wright.
So I have several comments, actually, and I don't, I don't think it's an either-or. I think it's a both-and in terms of thinking about what we do. To Board Member Craig's point, one of the things that we've done as an organization, and as I've done as the leader, is try to be, or have been, completely transparent about where we are with transportation. That's from day one. Once we knew where we were with buses, I have shared that information with the board and shared that information with parents as much as we can. The reality is, there is not a quick fix, and while we want the issue to be fixed immediately, there is not a one that I can raise and fix it immediately. There are several things, several tough decisions that we are going to have to make a decision on this year as a board, because the forecast for the number of buses and available drivers moving into next year does not get better. And so if we know that that doesn't get better, then we have to look at what might we do differently to have a different requirement for what we need around transportation. So the first, we currently use a two-tier system for transportation. In most situations, that would be fine. However, our challenge is back to the spread of where our students go to school. We have no control, so even if the students are not in their neighborhood, in a lot of areas, you would select some geographical area that they can go to in order for you to minimize the transportation that goes from one side of the community to the other side of the community. That's one. The second, currently, we have, we started with the need for about 50 buses and drivers right now because of the way that we've been able to continue to work through that process. I think this came up as a question earlier, we could be okay the rest of the year if we had about 20 more drivers. One of the things that's happening with drivers, however, is First Student, for example, in the last two weeks, hired seven drivers and seven drivers resigned. So as quickly as they're hiring individuals, individuals are also leaving. So I am seeing the yard signs on the side of the road for drivers, we're seeing them on the side, you know, of regular buses as well. We've had the conversation around incentives. Currently, our, the only other contractor that we have that has really helped us with additional buses has been First Student. We have three contractors. So really, the need is that First Student. What would then happen for us to, as we further dig in around incentives, is if we don't give incentives to all three of the contractors, then the only thing that happens is that First Student will recruit contractors from Peterman and UTS to then come to First Student, which causes a challenge on the Peterman and UTS side. In terms of on-time performance, we've worked with our, with our providers around on-time performance. I provide, I just provided for you today in a format that I could give it to you this evening, because there have been the questions around what's happening at specific schools, so I gave you the breakdown of the average of on-time performance by the month and the school, for all the schools in our district, starting with August. However, there are some schools, because the drivers are then dropping the students off and then coming back, if it's outside of five minutes, most of them are not going to be able to get, to improve what that on-time performance looks like, because they're already set up to run for them late. So, and there is no other way around it, it's either get the students to school a little later or not get them there at all. And so we, we're working with them around the expectation and how they're working through that process. The last issue in terms of students being put off at the wrong stop, or, I think there was the late question we've addressed, but students being put off at the wrong stop, that is something that we have talked to our contractors about quite a bit. We do have provisions in the contract for deliverables in terms of what the providers are doing, but we've also tried to really work with them and be a good partner in terms of that, because in so many instances, we need them to make sure that they keep showing up. So what's happening is usually when that occurs, and it's not okay, it's a, it's a safety issue, we understand the concern, not trying to make an excuse for it, but trying to be honest about it as well. It is generally a backup driver that does not know the route, that does not know the students, and when the students get off, there's really not a way to say specifically, yes, this child should get off here, or no, they should not. We are in a, in the process, I mentioned this earlier, I want to say I mentioned this initially in May or June, but we're in the process of looking at our own pilot going into about January, where we are able to pilot the cards that we use with the students that does give us information on when they actually get on the bus, when they actually walk through, you know, certain points at school, how they are then getting, you know, their meals and that kind of thing. So we are working through that, but right now, it is not something that we have in place. Some of the parents do have the GPS trackers that they either use on the phone for their students, but that's individually for them. We are meeting at the end of this week with First Student, somebody can correct me on the date, I think it's the end of this week with First Student, because there are also a lot of technological advances that they have that will allow us to do some of this. So proactively, our team is meeting with their team to look at what else might we be able to do as we prepare going into next year to address the issue, but it's not necessarily a fix for where we are right now.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Wright. Mrs. Weinberg, was there anything else on this topic that you wanted to raise?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll keep moving here, and I think we have concluded board matters. We're going to move to inquiries and updates. I have one that has come through from Dr. Moffett, but I wanted to see if other people have anything they want to share. Vice President Jones?
Yes, I have a, I wanted to ask my board colleagues, did we approve a 2023 calendar as yet?
For board meetings or for the school year?
Board meeting.
I think it's done and posted. I think, right, the, this is the, I'm looking at Phyllis, the board, board meeting calendar for 23?
Board meeting calendar.
I think it's up there, because I feel like we've looked at it, my wife and I, as we're planning things.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I can look forward, I mean, I'll look forward.
I'll tell, I'll confirm. Was there a second one, too?
No, I'll wait till assignment, I have one assignment, so.
Okay. Any other inquiries or updates? Ms. Bolton?
An inquiry, thank you for that information regarding magnets and lottery dates. The, I'd like to just emphasize two things on that, the sibling one, which is September 20th through October 28th, that wouldn't have, if we changed any schools or whatever because, as a result of ad hoc, or a result of trying to address some of the things, you know, partially or whatever, that wouldn't have any, that doesn't, wouldn't need to be changed. That's okay that that's taking place, because we've always said, if indeed we ever do change any of these particularly, it would be, it would be not done overnight, and that the sibling piece would already be taken care of. But some of these other dates, this December 6th through March 10th, we still had, I think, some confusion over the last couple of years about what were magnets and what weren't magnets, and things, and schools we thought had changed from being magnets, and I just would think that inquiry and update, for example, the information was out of area, meaning east or west, and that's, you were talking April and, and what have you, and then open enrollment in May, the month of May. My point is, it would be great, before we get too far down the road, for the next level of magnets. of magnets, that we are sure of which are magnets and which we already determined were going back to being neighborhood schools because they were not really teaching these other things. And I think that would just be, I have an inquiry about whether or not, I don't want to make that an assignment because it's been discussed and coming out of committee. But I think it would just, to draw attention to that would be important because we've, we've sat here before, not under your, uh, leadership, but others, where we thought even east-west for Montessori high schools had been taken care of two years before and it hadn't. So there are things that we can do incrementally that we've decided that we wanted to do. So I just appreciate this calendar because if we don't meet this calendar with whatever changes we've got or made before, then we lose another year.
So, so through the chair, um, this, just for full transparency, this is the calendar that was already done and has, is on the website that had been put into place for this year. Um, we have, I know we've discussed this before and it was, was discussed in, at the ad hoc committee meeting as well. There does not seem to be an individual that can provide, um, any updates for when certain magnets were changed from one magnet to the other. And so at this point, I would request if there are any minutes that show this information, um, there were, there are some that we know that they're no longer doing the program at the school. So we need to go through the process to remove the name of the program from the school. Um, but in terms of the, the magnets that are already listed, that that's, that, that should have happened with, we don't have a clean list for what that, those were. So essentially what's happened with these magnets is they have been updated, kind of rolled over from year to year and put in the system that way. So we, we started doing the cross-reference work since it was brought up. We are also, and this is not necessarily what you're referencing, you're talking specifically about, um, magnet programs that were no longer magnet programs, that we know are no longer magnet programs, but, or we thought that they were no longer getting the rights, if you will, or, or the benefits of being a magnet program, but they are still included in the magnet process. So they're still getting students assigned to those schools based on the magnet process. Um, the other thing that we're doing on the other end is currently, it's already started, the actual in-building, walking building audit-
Yeah.
-for each of the programs as well. So if there's anyone that has additional information or can locate anything else in minutes for where there may be changes, that can definitely be provided to us as well.
We can do that.
Thanks, Superintendent. You, Ms. Bolden, did that answer your question?
Yes, and, and that's to my point, if we don't fix some things now, but I understand you want to be able to show the data and when this decision was made and we can put that together for you, but if we, to, to wait too much longer, we would again lose another year. But we'll, we can, we have, we have verification for a number of those.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Bolden. Vice President Jones?
Yeah, I, I think rather than make an assignment, because I believe this has already been assigned, it's just kind of a reminder, so stated in inquiries. I believe the board had requested early in the year that we schedule several board meetings throughout the year out in the community. So if we could just revisit that and get the schedule, yeah.
That's great. Is that why you were asking about the schedule for board meetings? Is that why you were asking about the schedule for meetings?
Um, in part, but no, not exclusively.
And are we looking for those to start in January?
I, I, I'll leave that up to you. I mean, we usually, I mean, we typically have done them quarterly, but we're pretty much through this quarter. I, okay, I don't think, you know, maybe say a couple times, two or three times for the rest, remaining of the year and then maybe quarterly after that, quarterly next year. It is freezing.
Thanks, Vice President Jones. Other inquiries or updates? Mrs. Weinberg?
I'm trying to stay warm up here. Um, two questions for Superintendent Wright, uh, based off of your weekly update. I just wanted to kind of go over the vacancy numbers that you shared. Um, can you include, uh, do your numbers include preschool teachers? And can you talk a little bit about that? And then my second thing, can you also discuss the proposed elementary athletics? And will that be just for the fall sports or will that go over for winter and spring as well?
Thank you. So the numbers for pre-K, um, the non-core numbers that are provided for the board weekly include pre-K numbers. Um, so it includes the total numbers. The, the number of pre-K vacancies right now is 17. What we will add, as I, as I disaggregate the vacancies by position, uh, what we will do this time for, just to be responsive to the question, is add pre-K separately so that you can see that as a separate number, but they are included in non-core.
Thank you.
In terms of the athletics and, and elementary athletics, we know that we've had a challenge with elementary athletics because of transportation. We just do not have the transportation to get our students after school to the different programs. So what was being proposed was a field trip type format for the students. Um, and it would, would have been, uh, over several weeks. We're really at the end of that time now. Um, so the one proposal for soccer is coming up for like for November, the first week in November, that would be the one recommendation. Uh, we're revisiting for, um, the next round of sports because some of those have smaller numbers. So it may allow us to do more with transportation at that point. There seems to be more of an issue. Basketball comes up during that time. There seems to be more of a, of a willingness, if you will, to do, to have parents to transport. So it, it may not be the same proposal for, um, next set of, um, elementary sports.
Thank you.
Did you have another one, Mrs. Weinberg? Was that it?
Yep, that was it.
Great. Thank you. Um, thank you, Superintendent. Any other inquiries or updates? I'll, I'll share, Dr. Moffett, I think, sent one in through the, um, Jean's chat. I think we're having some trouble with the audio. Um, but her inquiry was, um, it was an update, was to let everybody know, um, Mr. Craig, you may want to speak to this to the city CPS joint meeting. I think just a reminder of like, or when it's happening, I can, I'm happy to share it for her if you want to.
Uh, yes, so I believe it is happening November 10th. Um, and again, this is really, the goal of this conversation is to be informative from both sides, right? And so allow us to inform them on a lot of how we operate and work and then them to inform what their programs are doing that, that connect this, to connect with us together. So, um, this is not intended to be one where we would, uh, tell them what to do or them to tell us what to do, but more for us to kind of update since we have seven new city council members. But yes, November 10th?
What time?
At-
What time?
Six to eight P.M.
Six to eight at Woodward High School is, I believe, the location we're looking at.
Yeah, Mrs. Vice President Jones?
Just to, uh, to add, if, if that's the date and, uh, we move forward, there needs to be some clear sort of facilit, uh, understanding about how those meetings are facilitated because both of us have their formal meetings for both entities. So the coordination of that in terms of the facilitation is gonna be important. And I don't know who's gonna do that, but then, um, I mean, it doesn't have to be done like we did, but historically, we've done that, um, like the president of the board with, uh, whoever the chair of that committee is, or I don't know if they're, is it a full board thing or a chair or a committee?
I think it's a great idea. And what I'd be happy to commit to is connecting with, with, uh, Mr. Craig and, uh, Dr. Moffett and make, making sure by the time we have our next meeting, uh, the committee, the whole meeting, I think is next, having an update for everybody.
And I think the intention is for it to be all, or as much of all- The intention is for it to be all of, uh, the board as well as all of city council, as much as possible. Uh, but yes, we can touch base with kind of how do we coordinate and facilitate that discussion on that date?
Thanks, uh, Mr. Craig, uh, and Dr. Moffett and Vice President Jones. Any other inquiries or updates? Moving along, any other assignments? I have no assignments tonight. I'm trying to make sure that for the person who's preparing our minutes, that that's really clear. Has anybody assigned anything tonight that I'm missing? Okay. No assignments, any announcements or kudos? Mrs. Weinberg?
All right. I think I have a slide here. I'm just gonna have Rob make it a little bit bigger. But, um, you all know that I love athletics and so I just wanted to give a huge shout out. Obviously, up first, um, we have eight teams that have made it to the CPS, uh, playoffs or football. So I just wanted you all to check out the names of those schools and give them a big round of applause. Make sure, um, make sure to just go out and support CPS football. And then, of course, in the middle, um, this past weekend, uh, Walnut Hills Junior High Soccer Team, they were able to win their conference soccer, uh, I guess you would call it a meet or soccer game, but it was an amazing opportunity for them to kind of come back. They had a wonderful season and to go out and win the trophy. Um, I was excited to be able to watch. And there's a special person in that picture too, but I won't specifically name her. Uh, last, do you all get that one?
Yeah.
Um, and then the last picture, I was very excited to hear about this young lady and I'm gonna hopefully say her name correctly, but it is Joyous Mahornake. And I just want to give a huge congratulations to her. Um, she was the Inquirer Athlete of the Week for Cross Country and she is from Aiken. So let's give her also a big round of applause. And I'm sorry, we didn't give the Junior High Walnut Hills Soccer Team a round of applause. Just let's give them a round. And that's all the kudos that I have. So I'm just really excited to see our students excelling and I look forward to hearing about all that the students do, whether it's in music, drama, art whatsoever, or sports or academics.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Weinberg, any other kudos this evening?
I have one, real quick.
Superintendent Wright?
I get a kudo. So real quick, um, I, I want to just publicly thank our communications team that worked in partnership with our face team. Um, they're just pushing out some really good work, uh, just collectively. I think that we're, we're really, uh, in, in making sure our presence is out there. But most specifically, last Tuesday, uh, we had our state of the schools address for our students, uh, here in ILC. Every single school in our district, including Lighthouse, was represented, every single school. And I think that the team deserves a round of applause, uh, for that. If you have not seen the brief snippets that they have put online, the responses from the students, um, we did not do any selection process for students. We share it with schools. Each school can have a maximum of six. Um, and our, our operations team, um, through food service, made sure that our students had lunch provided. And we did not have anyone run late after the fact getting back to school with transportation. So transportation was here, they were on time, they got back in time to make sure they picked up on time. So we were not a part of the problem last week, um, by having that event. So I did just want to share that. And I will ask that everyone pay attention this weekend, on Saturday, on Sunday, our next alphabet soup will go out. That's our electronic newsletter. Um, so it goes out the Sunday before the start of the month. So that will happen next week as well.
That's great. Thank you very much, Superintendent. Uh, having no other business before us, I declare our meeting adjourned.